It is 12:59 PM, January 31st, Friday. And we will begin this work session at Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thanks everyone for being here. We are starting with...
So, we are starting with Casey McPherson from DOLA. However, I don't see her on Zoom right now, so...
Hi!
So what I want to do really quick, and I do bring... Is make sure that she's not having some kind of technical...
Okay.
And Cece organized everything, and she's out today, so if she's not here, I'm gonna actually hop out for just a minute because they don't have the right phones to get over her.
Okay.
And see if she's having difficulties joining us, so I apologize.
No worries. What are you seeing Lauren? Do we have the right people here to jump ahead on anything? Or should we just wait until we figure out where folks are at?
It's kind of all CPD right now. I just wanna go...
How's it going?
Alright, how about you?
Absorbing.
Really easy, right? It's okay.
Treading water.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's...
Yes.
Better than not.
Not drowning.
Better than not, yes. Yeah, Tamara won't be here till 3 o'clock, so... Let's see what...
Can't really jump ahead on this one, it's a big one.
Yeah, it's what Ann wants to do. Folks from the planning commission wanna jump in, or... But I'll give her a second.
Pull up this packet and see what the structure looks like. Is there anything else with this packet and teams? Or is it... The PowerPoint only has two title screens on it?
Yeah, I know Tamara didn't offer or create a PowerPoint. I think she's just gonna come and talk about EDC.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if anyone from DOLA created anyone, so if they're not in there, then we didn't receive one from our partner.
Sounds good.
Hi, Ann.
Okay, here we go.
Hey, so you are... You're calling Heather. When I'm up in the room?
Yeah.
Hi, Casey.
It's Casey, oh, yeah. She just has joined right now.
Hi, I just got the link, thank you.
Yeah, perfect, bye. Okay, Ann's already back up.
The floor is yours, Casey, whenever you wanna start.
Alright. Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Casey McPherson. I'm the Senior Planner in DOLA's Division of Local Government. And, well, I have to tell you, I'm really excited. In about a month and a half, it'll be my 10-year anniversary there, so... This is truly... These Planning Refreshing, Forever Fresher workshops are my favorite things. I've been sort of holding a lot of housing and land use implementation work lately, so I haven't done one of these in a little while. Thank you for having me to run another. I also wanted to let you know that I've invited a colleague of mine, Eugene Howard. He's now supporting the implementation of land use and housing work. And I said, hey, this is a cool thing we do, like related, unrelated to his work. So I invited him to come sit in with us. I hope that's alright. With that, oh, it says I need permission to screen share.
Does that work? You should have it.
Yes, thank you. Hey, you can see my screen now?
Yep.
Yep.
Wonderful. Okay, so, jumping right in. A few logistics and disclaimers. This training typically runs about two hours. And it depends on how excited I get about giving explanatory digressions or how fast I talk. If I talk too fast, remind me to slow down, I do get a little excited about these topics. And I put this, because we do these virtually, I said, speak up or use the chat, but you're mostly together, so I'll just say, go ahead and speak up and interrupt me to ask questions along the way, offer stories and examples, and respond to scenario questions. They start a little slow, the scenario questions. I talk a lot at the beginning, but then they become more peppered throughout, throughout the slides. And then finally, topics are anticipated to be 90% applicable. What I mean by that is, this is what I'm gonna say today is what's true most of the time, but every community is a little bit different. Your procedural rules, a little bit different, your code, just all kinds of things. So if you think, ah, we do that a little differently, yeah, probably do. You can check in with staff or with each other about what your variations are, but this, what we'll talk about is going to be what's generally true very much most of the time. And so, here is what we will cover, starting off with welcome and introductions. Could we, would you mind, could we quickly go around the room and just say, like, who's here? How long you've been on, what your role is? Is that alright?
Heather, go ahead, Heather.
Heather Lynn, I'm Chair of the Planning Commission, and I don't know how long.
A long time.
Sure, yeah, it's been a while.
Couple decades.
Nah, I'm not...
I'm Andrew Lee, Lake County Commissioner, District 1.
I'm Elsa Tharp, I am also Commissioner. And I have been Commissioner for two and a half weeks.
Steve Stevens, Planning Commissioner, one year.
Lawrence Snyder, Deputy County Manager. I'm not on the planning commission.
Chris Floyd, County Attorney. I've been providing legal services to counties since 2016.
Dave Jurich, I just joined the Planning Commission last week.
Hi, Casey, Ann Snyder. I've been Director of the Department for three years, but with the county for 11.
I'm Melissa Kendrick, Deputy Planning Director for CPD, and I've been with the department about four months.
Amy Tate, I'm on the Board of Adjustment, I think for four or five years now.
I'm Tim Berry, I've been on Board of Adjustment about a year now.
I'm former County Attorney.
Alec Woods, former County Commissioner, new Board of Adjustment, all June.
And we have a couple on Zoom, I think, too. Then on Zoom...
Jason Marufo, Planning Commission, I've been on for about a year now.
Okay, I think that's...
And then we also have Dave Clark-Barrill on there.
Hi, Dave Clark-Barrill, been here for about a year.
Yeah. And Eugene did join us, if you wanna give a wave, hello Eugene. I sort of introduced you before.
Oh, great. Hi.
Okay, thanks for that. It's helpful to know who's out there. So what we'll, what we'll move into next after the introductions are, is why plan and planning authority? Roles and responsibilities? Long-range planning and implementation? There's the biggest section is on effective meetings and decision-making. Some legal and ethical issues, attorneys out there. Hopefully that'll be fun for you. And then again, as I mentioned, some scenario questions peppered throughout. But if you'll bear with me, it'll take some patience before we get to the first one. So before we dive into why plan and where planning authority comes from in Colorado, a few comments about the Department of Local Affairs or DOLA. So our mission is strengthening Colorado communities. And you can see this, I don't know what to call that, flower sort of? I don't know what that is, of what our divisions are. I'm in the Division of Local Government, but we do also have Disaster Recovery, Housing, Property Tax, and others. We also, in the Division of Local Government, have a Regional Manager structure. So you're in Randy Sneed's region, South Central. But we have eight regions across the state, and so I'm sure you're familiar with Randy. If not, for those unaware, the Regional Managers are sort of the first touch point for accessing DOLA programming, mostly our grant programming. And here are some other thoughts on planning resources. So Eugene and I are both in the Community Development Office, and our focus is on technical and financial assistance. So we give general land use and planning assistance, like today's workshop is an example of that. And then we also have a lot of work in integrated land use. So what does it look like to integrate water into land use planning? Or integrate housing or hazards and so on? We also have a team that's the Main Street Team that works on downtown revitalization. I, of course, will share these slides after the session, and you can follow that link to learn more. Or of course, Google any number of our acronym alphabet soup, DOLA, CDO, these kinds of things will get you to our pages. And here's some examples of what you might find there. If you're someone who likes written material, maybe you wanna print it out and mark things up, we've got a lot of stuff on our webpages for you for that. There's a whole section on Planning Commissioner Resources, everything from why plan to authority to a master plan primer. So again, if you wanna sort of have a second pass at the learning, because I know today will be a lot, and maybe mark up some documents, that would be a good site to visit. And then we also have a page dedicated to water and land use integration. We have a staff member who is our Land Use and Water Planner and has a whole bunch of materials and can also be one-on-one to talk about, how's that going in your jurisdiction? What are your next set of goals? What are other resources to be aware of? That kind of thing. We've got another page dedicated to hazards, the same speaking points as the water, except insert hazards. And then we've been working to build out information on innovative, affordable housing strategies. And Lake County and Leadville have been very involved in our programming there. So I would imagine you're all more aware of this than maybe other communities, but we've been working to build out some case studies and examples of innovative housing strategies based on different community contexts. And I was excited to be able to update this slide because we have now finalized our template land development code, and it is live on our website. So that's a tool that could be used by communities or consultants to be foundational, kind of a leg up, if you're going to be updating your land development code. Take a look at that. We tried to hit a good, like, like, I don't know, silver status for the land development code with information for communities who wanna take things further. There's information about that. And we also created a streamlined version, although it's still several hundred pages and it's land development code, but we created a streamlined version for smaller communities, too. And then final comment on information about DOLA. For those, especially the ones new on the Planning Commission, I would definitely recommend checking out the State Demography Office. You know, good planning starts with good data, and they are a treasure trove of data. So you can even go onto their site and develop a, or generate, ask it to generate a community profile, and it can give you information like this and so much more about housing, population, economic information as well. It's a really fun sort of treasure trove of data to play around with. I think they also have an annual summit, but that's in the fall, although they record them all. So if you're interested in what they talked about last fall, that is on their website. Okay, now that what I'll lovingly call the DOLA commercial is over, let's dive into the main agenda. So we're gonna kick it off with why plan and planning authority. So generally speaking, I would say, planning helps governments to be more efficient and effective. If we know that we're gonna be looking at, you know, a certain type of development, we know we have other goals, how can we work to integrate, maybe achieve multiple things at once? Helps communities see the opportunities. If there's already a, let's say, comprehensive plan that says, we wanna prioritize open space acquisition, or whatever your priority might be, then the next time an opportunity comes up, there's already that generated support to take action, move more quickly on that. And it can prevent undesirable development. So yet again, this has been my, at least five years running, favorite picture for this slide, and I challenge every community I talk to to see if you can give me a better one. I wouldn't ever say who it came from, but this has been my favorite for years running. So good planning can help make sure that our infrastructure or any number of other things that we're doing actually works well for the people who are going to be using it. Here's another quote that I like to keep in mind. Maybe it's helpful to you when you're out in community. I don't know if you're asked, but I certainly, certainly am asked, ah, why plan anyway? You know, it's not just that something that sits on a shelf. Well, I like this quote a lot, keep it in my back pocket. Who would invest in a corporation if it didn't have a business plan? No one, right? So the same is true for a community. If it doesn't have a plan, every successful institution, whether a corporation, community, needs a plan. For your consideration. But then we do have grounding authority as well. So grounding authority for planning is effectively the rights of government to establish law and ordinances to preserve public order and tranquility, promote public health, safety, and general welfare. So this is reserved to the states and granted to local governments through statute. Authority to plan in Colorado. We have, Colorado is a local-controlled state, so matters of local concern, handled locally. There are a few state statutory planning requirements, and I will go through those in a couple slides' time. There've been some changes recently, and I'll make sure that you're very clear on what those are. So we do have a few state statutory planning requirements. And the grants of authority for land use planning, I wanna highlight statutory authority as well as form rule. Communities will also be taking a look at their charter. A couple other comments on statutory authority. So first off, regulations must be tied to a valid public purpose. That's what's known as substantive due process. And also be enacted and implemented so that those who are directly affected have a meaningful opportunity to participate. So that's called procedural due process. And we're gonna talk a lot about, especially procedural due process, later on in the meetings and decision-making portion of the, of the slides today. So another way to think about this is substantive due process, and that is tied to the valid public purpose, so it's like, you know, are we, are we doing something that we have authority to touch? And then the procedural due process, in honor of the Super Bowl coming up, I have referees for you. The procedural due process is making sure that, I'll say, for the Planning Commission, for example, that we're keeping an eye on the rules of the game and enforcing those rules consistently. Again, much more on that in the meetings and decision-making portion of these slides. Alright, here are the statutorily required planning pieces in Colorado. They're, you know, they're, they're nothing to sort of look past, but they do fit on one slide, so that's encouraging, right? We have, first off, master plans are required. That's, master plans is what, what they're called in statute. They can also be called comprehensive plans, or some communities call them something entirely different, like, you know, envision, I think envision la monte is one, envision the X community. But by statute, they're called master plans. So those are required for local governments that meet certain statutory criteria for population and growth rate. Counties have some requirements around subdivision regulations. Municipalities need to create three-mile plans. And there are a couple here at the bottom are the new things from last year's legislative session. So first off, there are some requirements around a water element in comprehensive plans. And I have a full slide on this, so I'm gonna speak at a high level just for this one. But now there's a water, water supply element that's required. A strategic growth element is required for communities of a certain size. And so communities that are smaller or have a negative growth rate would not be doing a strategic growth element, but others would. Housing, responding to a recent housing needs assessment or housing action plan is now required for communities who must do housing action plans, which again, that's not all of them, it gets nuanced. And by the way, we are working on an applicability matrix for this to support communities to see now that there's more nuance, what exactly must be done, where and why. And then finally, three-mile plans of municipalities must, must now be included in comprehensive plans. So I'm gonna dig in on, wait, I'm not? Oh, maybe that's in the, it's in the implementation section. So I don't wanna leave you hanging. Let me just tell you a couple comments here before we get to the slide on the water element. I wanna comment that for those of you who have been following this requirement, formerly soft requirement, it's no different from what was required beforehand. So in 2020, we had to, we had a requirement that if comprehensive plans included a water element, then they must do a certain number of things. So consider water conservation, talk with water suppliers as they develop it, and then assess a range of water needs based on expected growth. So basically, the punchline, since I don't wanna leave you guessing, is that that formerly voluntary element is now required. That's all. But more information in the section about comprehensive plans. Before we get there, let's talk a little bit about roles and responsibilities. So here, we're gonna start with the idea that, I'm sure this feels very familiar to everyone out there. We may wear many hats, but when it comes to decision-making and running effective public meetings and public hearings, it's important to choose one at a time or be aware that you could introduce risks. We'll talk much more about that throughout this session today. And I'm gonna go over the roles for these groups here. Elected officials, Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, staff, citizens, and the applicant. So to start off with elected officials, generally, elected officials are making policy and legislating, using that enabling authority we just talked about in the Charter, if applicable, to protect the public interest, appointing boards that will further the mission, providing general direction and ongoing two-way communication. So giving that direction, appointing people, and, but not micromanaging. Role of the Planning Commission, this is an appointed body, not elected advisory to the elected board. They're preparing the master or comprehensive plan, applying current policy and regulations, providing planning and land use expertise. Even those of you who, you said you're just a few weeks new into your position, still, I would argue that you have planning and land use expertise. Review development applications, adopt and consistently use bylaws, and regularly assess planning policies and regulations. I also wanna point out, since it's a county I'm talking to, that there was a change from Senate Bill 24-174, so from that last session. There was a change in county comp plans that now mirrors the municipal section. Specifically, it's the same authority now in the B O C C as far as approving and adopting the comprehensive plan. So formerly, the statute said that it's the duty of the Planning Commission to prepare and adopt the comprehensive plan. That role is still there, but now the official adoption mirrors how it has been done in municipalities, which is, that power is now with the B O C C. So I just wanted to make sure to flag that for those of you who are new. Their comments of the Planning Commission. So something I like to say is the Planning Commission is a team made happily of distinct colorful characters, but don't be this teammate. So here we have maybe some eye-rolling, maybe bullying, tilting at windmills, trying to go as a Lone Ranger, seeing what you can get away with, or the legend Kenny Rogers. Giving the message of those who maybe like to see what they can get away, gamble with. And I would say, you know, from what I've seen, a lot of some of this behavior often can come from a good place, maybe trying to be efficient or other things like that. But they're ignited by being a little bit cavalier. And so the message I'd like to send here is being cavalier undercuts credibility, and it can introduce liability. Again, we wanna be thinking of, of the decision-making process like the Super Bowl referee. What are the rules and making sure we're staying within enforcing those? Not giving the other team's fans a chance to say that there's favoritism, right? And then a few final thoughts for Planning Commission, especially if you're new, but honestly, great information regardless. So I mentioned CDO is the Community Development Office, that's where I'm housed. I mentioned our Planning Commissioner webpage. There's also the Planetizen and APA, American Planning Association of Colorado. List serves, they send out great, they have good webpages and send out great information if you like getting, getting your info that way. And then of course, your own comp plan and regulations, your own other departments and service providers for some neighborhood groups. It really depends on, you know, your community best, of course, who might be interesting to connect with and give their perspective on the now and the future. And also to consider who's not well represented. Especially, again, I would say this is a great one, especially for those who are new, and ask a lot of questions and then keep asking questions. One of the things that keeps me in the land use and planning game is that it changes all the time. I've never really been bored, because it's always something that changes. So while I would say all of you already have expertise and that will grow all the time, it's not really, in my opinion, not an area that, it's not, not a pool that can ever be filled, right? There's always new knowledge in planning and land use. People changing, times are changing, I don't know. Okay, Board of Adjustment. Some quick comments here. It's an appointed, not elected group, dealing with appeals and variances, quasi judicial procedures. Appeals to administrative decisions may be granted if the board finds there's an error in a decision of an administrative official, and relief may be granted so long as there's no substantial detriment to the public good and without impairing the intent of the zoning resolution or regulation. So little safety valve group. I'm so glad to see that some of you are out there in the audience. You probably have other, other thoughts about all the things that you do as well. This is a high-level summary, isn't it? Also, high-level role of staff. So staff and consultants, by the way, provide technical expertise and guidance, information... information and training. They assist with research, write the staff review or staff report. Provide notice of meetings and communicate with the applicants, ensure good communication and offer professional opinions. Lots to do, big to do list there, staff. I also had asked, I don't know, some months ago, there was a community who was struggling with, maybe it was years ago at this point. Anyway, there was a community who was struggling with how much authority can we, should we delegate to different groups? Like, how's our process looking? Is this how other communities are doing it? Or should we consider different things? And so ever since then, we've been playing with the wording and information on this slide. So a few comments to that end, and let me start by saying there are lots of ways to sort of distribute the tasks here, but generally my reaction was, well, the typical distribution is that there's the staff review and staff report, the planning commission, P C here. Planning commission is the fact finder. They're applying the rules and giving a recommendation. And the elected bodies giving the final determination. That's like the typical cadence of things. Some jurisdictions though leave more to the P C, the planning commission. You know, say, consider due process. So that'll be a question not to, I don't mean to raise the alarm bell there. Just ask your staff and hey, your attorney's here too. For any more thoughts on that, but some jurisdictions do leave a lot to the planning commission. As they're preparing that final recommendation. You can also delegate to staff through broad process changes like by right development and administrative review processes. And that's something else that a lot of communities are starting to get into. And then finally, consider referrals when things get complex. So that yes, you're absolutely experts, but like I said, one of the interesting things is there are always curveballs. So if you're feeling like you're in over your head, just remember there's information and support out there in referral processes to get comments. Well, the system is to participate fully, advise appointed and elected officials, ask questions and offer infinite solutions. And finally, applicants. Applicant's role is to learn and respect adopted rules and processes, to expect a fair and predictable process, not risk the system, communicate issues and concerns and have a realistic expectations and understanding of the role of government. But then the hope is that the communication is, hey, if you follow our rules, more likely to get support for the, for the project. So reflecting on all the roles, the many cooks and sort of the land use and planning kitchen. Some of the, one thing that we recommend is to regularly slow down and reflect together on how things are going. What's working well, what isn't, where are we seeing issues emerge? Are there any trends? That could be a sign that perhaps some, something in code needs to change. If you're constantly dealing with this one's issue and there's confusion around it, maybe it's time to dive in and adjust standards. We like to recommend annual meetings, especially between the planning commission and the elected board. It's a good time to discuss together what's working well and what isn't, and a good time to make recommendations for any potential changes to policies, regulations and standards. Okay, that was a lot of me talking and there's only one scenario question, but just to get you warmed up on it. We're going to start and I'll warn you, I'm not afraid of a silence, but I don't, I won't expect that you'll be a quiet group. So diving in, our first scenario question is the planning commission makes a unanimous decision, but the board overturns it, which in fact happens often. What actions could the commission take to address their concern about being overturned? A, talk with staff for feedback, ask for regular check-ins. B, call the B O C C chair to find out more detail. C, attend their next public meeting and raise the issue for discussion. D, post a letter on social media. Make sure that community understands the planning commission's point of view. Here's the thought, I heard the A. Yeah, I think A is good. Of course, you know, talking with staff is always a great first call. Asking for check-ins to see what's going on, especially if it is happening a lot, like, hey, you know, what's going on? What, what are, what, why are we two ships passing in the night kind of conversation? Yeah, other, other actions could present some challenges. We'll talk later about ex parte communications. And there's a lot, these hypotheticals leave a lot of nuance out of the questions. So we don't know things, right? Like if this matter could come back to the planning commission, it's possible. So in that case, we wouldn't want to call them and have communications outside of that process, but these questions are meant to be helpful, but they do leave a lot to the imagination. I'll, I'll warn you. Okay, so, yeah.
Do you mind just kind of speaking to why you wouldn't want to do C R D? You kind of raised, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So, C, I mean, and this is where I'm just going to start venturing into some thoughts. And please understand that I come from like a seat that hears a lot of information from the whole state. So I just want to have said that so that you're not thinking, I heard something about your community. No. This is just based on hearing a lot of things from all kinds of communities over many years. So generally, C, attending their next public meeting and raising the issue for discussion. It could, the biggest issue that I've heard is that it can be divisive. So instead of trying, it's, it was up, in this scenario, it's up to the board to make the final call. They did overturn the P C. It's assumed in the question that that's in their authority. And so it's not really like, the question is why raise the issue? Best case is to raise the issue to figure out how the planning commission, the board can get on the same page about the kinds of decisions we're making, the kinds of standards we're applying and how things are going. So raising it at the public meeting could be a little like, how to say, airing dirty laundry, right? When we have our other processes to try and get on the same page. Posting a letter on social media, again, can, it can just be a little divisive as a platform. I, I have a hard time and you'll see, you can already probably see how awkward I get when I talk about social media in these trainings because on the one hand, there, it's a wonderful communication tool. It's where a lot of community is and wants to comment on things. So I'm not saying it's a thing to be entirely avoided. I just do think it does have some pitfalls. And so going on there and making sure the community understands what the planning commission did, even though it was overturned. Again, it could be a little undercutting to trust in the whole process. Because what this question is trying to get at is clearly there is a, some kind of a process issue. So we would then recommend the P C and the board be on the same page about how standards are being applied and what may be going wrong. Rather than trying to convince the community of something or other in a particular instance.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, I'll dive a bit into long range planning and implementation. So here are some big picture planning tools that take us from a vision through implementation. So generally, we've got our master or comprehensive plan. Municipalities will have a three mile plan. Annexation policies, intergovernmental agreements, planning developments, I hear an application's coming up in your area. It's N forty-one towers are areas of street interest, so that's kind of a local overlay of regulation. Stop division, zoning, building codes and incentives and programs. So lots and lots of tools, but to start with the biggest picture first, the community's comprehensive plan. So this is what I would say is the community's vision and roadmap to implementing the future. In Colorado, most comprehensive plans are advisory rather than regulatory, but they can be a mandatory if they're adopted with sufficient detail as a regulation. That's very uncommon, but there's a potential. And then as I mentioned earlier, again, in statute, they're called master plans, but they're called so many things in different jurisdictions. From comprehensive to some, there's things that are completely unique and creative. But they're still serving the same kind of purpose. And here are the standard elements that you tend to find in a comp plan. So they may have transportation, housing, hazards, natural resources, energy, economic development. And then some communities too, by the way, will have, will maybe not have those or have a very light touch. And then they'll have like a a water master plan that goes really into detail. So this is, when I say standard plan elements, I really just mean common. And, and sometimes they'll just reference, like a lot of municipalities will just reference a county's hazards plan and that's perfectly sufficient. Now these required comprehensive plan elements in red. So now this is a callback to what we started talking about in our grounding authority section. For in Colorado, there's a requirement that you have a recreation and tourism element, a water supply element, strategic growth, maybe depending, and also incorporating responding to a housing action plan. Again, that's a maybe. Depending on population size. So now to dive into a little bit more detail. What Senate Bill twenty-four one seventy-four now requires communities to include this water supply element in a comprehensive plan. And here are the things that must be there. So there must be a narrative description of the procedure used to develop and adopt the plan, the housing action plan. Again, the recreation tourism element, three mile plan, again, it's for municipalities. So you can ignore that one. A strategic growth and water supply element have a timeline associated with them. So those must be incorporated by the end of twenty twenty-six and also updated every five years. Now, please don't be alarmed. We are working on some guidance about what in the heck those things are and what to do if you're a community who maybe hasn't update plans, but it's not exactly timed with this timeline. We'll be here for you. We'll talk much more about how to handle that. And also, no, that's, I just want to say that there is a timing requirement now, but if that is, if you find that very unsettling, please feel free to let go of that and know that we are here to talk more and craft a path forward. So specifically, if you're going to be updating your comp plan, updating this water element, what in the world does that mean? Here are those pieces that I was working to describe earlier. So for the water element, it must include some consultation and coordination with local water providers. It must, the comp plan element must include water conservation policies and also estimate a range of water supplies and facilities that are needed to support potential development that's described in the comp plan. As I mentioned, we also do have our land use and water planner and he's got all kinds of resources and tools to support communities as they're developing or updating this element of their plan. So that's a reminder of me to say what I just said. We have this webpage and our staffer. Okay, and why, why so much focus on a comp plan? Well, in my view, comp plans are foundational documents. Like you can't have a strong council that's got a cracked foundation, right? So this is how we capture the vision of the community and then that informs rezoning requests, land use code updates, annexation requests, decisions about expanding infrastructure or the location of that infrastructure and just general overall vision for growth, development and other things. So without that strong foundation, it just makes the other jobs all the harder. But it's not the one and only. There are a number of other long range plans that some communities have a combination of or all of them, or you know, none at all. It just kind of depends. But you might see sub area master plans, capital improvement plans, a separate water conservation plan. I mentioned some communities really want to drill in and do something more sophisticated. Open space hazards, downtown storm, et cetera. There's so many other long range plans that are issue specific. And you know, I'm sometimes asked, well, is it better to have those in the comp plan or have separate plans? And my answer is, I don't know, six of one, half of the other. To me, the question is, do they support each other or do they conflict with each other? It's really, we, when we're thinking of planning and community development, we just want to make sure we're all like grown in the same direction. And so it's important, especially for those of you who are new on the planning commission, I would encourage you to take a look and make sure there's consistency of vision and that implementation supports that. So I mentioned three mile plan. If it's alright with you all being Lake County, I will skip ahead since this applies only to municipalities, but so that you're not left wondering, I'll say it's an effort to plan in the, in the event of an annexation. So, so. When we're talking about implementing our long range plans, there are lots of tools available and they can all be customized. So I would point to policies like annexation or water adequate public facilities, programs. Like are we streamlining review for anything in particular? Are we streamlining review for everything? And is that really prioritizing anything at all? What kind of fees do we waive, if any, and how's that going? Regulation, so zoning, subdivisions, development standards. Service provision, agreements with service providers and our rate structures, that says a lot about where priorities are. And then other considerations like budget, capital improvement plans, intergovernmental agreements, our I G As. And what I would say for any of these is take a look and consider what's working. And based on what we see here, what are we incentivizing? Think a lot can be gleaned, especially from what we decide to give a streamlined review, what fees we decide to waive and you know, what kind of fees we attach to development. There's a lot about what we're incentivizing and what we want to see be built. Now again, coming from the big sort of statewide seat of trends across the entire state, here are some bullets about trends that we see in planning lately and some of them are a little bit older than others, but so I would say generally the trends we see are interest in planning for an aging demographic, public health and mobility, integrating hazards. And planning for and protecting a sufficient water supply, also quality. Creating opportunities for housing, strategizing for a economic diversification, considering social equity inclusive engagement and fiscally sustainable infrastructure. And I want to take a moment, actually a slide, and touch on what in the world I mean by fiscally sustainable infrastructure. So we had this group come and give us a presentation. They're consultants called Urban Three and they call themselves Geo Accountants. And so something I love that they say is much like your accountant, they say, hey, we don't care if you're gonna, if you want a boat, we don't care if you buy a speedboat or a canoe, we'll just tell you what it's going to do to your budget. Like that approach. And so that's really the intent here is they analyze communities and look at infrastructure costs over the long term. And what this slide and this big red arrow is showing you is that they work across the nation, including in Colorado and what they've seen here as well as elsewhere. That, for example, a cul-de-sac style development pattern is about one point eight times as expensive as a traditional grid to maintain in the long term. And again, that's not a judgment, it's just a budgeting question. So the practice pointer here is that community design does carry varying costs. And so the key is just to consider how to budget for the associated costs on both short and long term timelines. Lots of interest in analyzing that recently. It's been, for me anyway, fascinating to watch and I promise to continue sharing anything that we learn along the way. Okay, now we're going to move into meetings and decision making. This section has the most scenario questions, so get your brains revved up. But my first question is, do your meetings ever look like this? Or no? Or do they look like this? Which one resonates more? Never does, right? Surely not in Lake County, no. This is my favorite, maybe my favorite picture. After that poll in the middle of the sidewalk, that's my second favorite picture. Alright, so you know, public meetings in here, you can go a number of different ways. And I'm going to focus my comments on, based on types of actions. So I'm going to focus mostly on legislative actions, which are reflecting public policy. So things that are having a permanent or permanent or general character, not restricted to an individual. That's very different from quasi judicial processes. That is where we're thinking about determination of rights or obligations of an individual. Use of legislative rules to make determination on an application. Quasi judicial. First, public meetings. So this is when you're wearing your legislative hat. The goal of a public meeting is to seek input to champion broad, inclusive public participation, explain the context, the big picture, the process and timeline. Demonstrate active listening, limit jargon and acronyms. That can have to do with, that can promote protecting people's due process rights. Making sure that they actually have access to information. They're not confused by jargon and acronyms. As you've already seen, I violate that rule sometimes in my slides with acronyms. So a bit of a crutch, but also in a public meeting, another goal is to help make it relevant. Why care? What does this matter? Act as a community ambassador and remain courteous no matter what. Public hearings are a different animal. This is wearing the quasi judicial hat and has lots more due process protections. So some comments here, announce the rules in advance and enforce them consistently. Remain unbiased while hearing evidence, show you're listening. Remain unbiased while hearing evidence. Show you're listening. There's some overlap, right? With what we're trying to do in a public meeting. It's important, especially in a public hearing, to have a strong chair and a supportive board, that we're staying on task and avoiding tangents. We're getting input only during the notice public hearing. We're asking questions designed to get at, does this application meet our standards? And we're making careful motions. So I'm going to dig in on, on some of those points now. The next several slides. What makes a meeting effective? I would offer that everyone had a meaningful opportunity to participate, that people feel they were heard, relevant issues were addressed related to our standards, our adopted standards. There were no long tangents. You can always start with the staff report. That's a really slick move, I think. Commission's decision was clear, but why, and it was reasonably defensible. What the chair is, is very important. So the chair is, I don't, I don't know. I like to play with different metaphors, but today I decided train conductor. So the idea of a strong chair is someone who's looking at the timetable. They're saying, all right, is everyone aboard? Are we on the right track? You know, what's coming up next? They're setting the right tone, ensuring civility, being a strong listener and a timekeeper, and they're on point with the not handing over control of the meeting. I also like to comment how some people maybe think you make decisions. And I committed to moving past my applause meter. I know it's a little dusty, and so I put in this one with likes, but I don't know. It's stubborn, and I don't want to get rid of it. But the key is, how you actually make decisions can be quite different from how people maybe think you do. It's not really about what's popular, or at least it shouldn't be, because then we're introducing liability potential. Instead, it's whether the project in a quasi-judicial decision-making process meets the standard. So we're doing that fact-finding. We're feeling like a judge because we're applying our standards, and it's not about what is most popular. Some tips on improving meetings. Provide information on procedures ahead of time and repeat if needed throughout the meeting. You can keep your own cheat sheet. Some even will, like, post a big, big font list of, of rules on the wall in their meeting rooms. Heard that before. Thank people for their testimony. Sounds small, but can carry a big impact. Watch for non-verbal cues. I like to include this on here. It's okay to acknowledge that my decisions can feel political and personal. It's this. I would say, again, recognize that I'm coming from a statewide vantage point and sort of maybe curate this according to how your community would respond. For some communities, they have told me, just making that acknowledgement, taking all the heat out of a touchy conversation, and then they were able to move back to the standards and apply them and proceed. Others that could blow things up. So you know your community best. Show extraordinary patience and consider your intent. Really, that's meaning when you're asking a question. And hopefully, that's pinging in your memory that the intent ought to be related to getting information on the extent to which the application needs adopted standards. On the flip side of the coin, some common hurdles and mistakes that we tend to see and fear about not being prepared, not asking enough questions, so not fully developing that record of decision. Asking for a vote of the audience, that hands over control, but also, by the way, to the adopted standards, and also, we don't know that that's a representative group, community, anyway. Another hurdle, showing bias before a decision is made. Offering design ideas or other suggestions, in other words, attempting to be the architect or the applicant. So again, thinking back to that first slide in this section, which hat are we wearing? And sticking to that lane. This one's so important, it gets its own slide. Avoid let's make a deal. There is a strong pull sometimes to try and be the architect at the dais and make modifications to try and make a project better. That can introduce all kinds of risks. So the main question here is, does the project meet your standards or not? And then developing a full record of decision that supports, that supports the ultimate decision and outcome there. Another set of comments, so important they get their own slides. Social media. As advertised, I feel a little awkward on this topic because social media is such a pervasive kind of tool and important and can be really effective. So what I would say, though, is consider the front page newspaper test. So would you feel happy if whatever it is was splashed across the front page? Do not use social media to argue, condemn, attack, or even set the record straight. There's already a record of decision. Leave it to staff for these kinds of communications. Again, we talked earlier in the role section about they give the notice, they do those kinds of things. Establish and discuss a social media policy if you don't have one already. And then I wanted to mention, there's some interesting, I mean, I feel like it took a little, it's settled down a little bit. But starting around twenty nineteen, we started to see some interesting case law bubble. So there is something out of the Fourth Circuit that said that a commissioner's Facebook page was a tool of governance. And now, this was a obviously very specific situation, but I include this bullet here as a reminder that depending on how we're using social media, that can make our presence there kind of a different thing, maybe than we intended. Which is why it would be great, if you don't already have a social media policy, to consider, sit, or maybe you do and you want to review it. So I would say, sit together. Your attorney's there, maybe has some thoughts. Sit together, consider what you have or what you don't, consider updating it if you do, and how you want to proceed. The best way to handle policies like this is to set them up ahead of time. And one thing I'll say is the most heartbreaking situations when I've seen communities and planning commissions especially trying to put a policy in place is when they're already dealing with trying to clean up a mess. So best to set it up ahead of time and stick to it well, rather than wait until someone takes an action you wish wouldn't have happened, and now we're having to put something in place. That's more awkward than I get when I talk about social media. All right, decision-making and defensible procedures for hearings. It's critical to make sure that you're aware of what your procedures are and that you're following them consistently. That means providing notice, an opportunity to be heard, having clear rules, following your process and rules, ensuring you've got good findings of fact. I have more information on that coming to you shortly. That you're having unbiased and timely decisions and complete records. So let's take this a little bit further. So now we're thinking especially about motions. I'll say about motions that, well-prepared motions, take some effort. But they explain to the applicant and the audience, and hopefully not a judge, but potentially, you know, something where challenged a judge, how the decision was made. Recommend that you agree on procedures that will be used for meetings and for motions. And one recommendation I do like to make, especially as you have new members, is to try and rotate who makes the motion, just for your practice. Some other thoughts on motions on how to avoid getting tripped up. A couple of comments. Before voting as one complex motion, you can vote on decisions one at a time. You can move to prove the reasons listed in the staff report, includes that in the findings. It's a great move as well. And then some comments on findings of fact. So findings of fact are your factual foundations for your conclusions as to whether your standards are met. So I like to call these your legal footprints or breadcrumbs. What happens in this decision? Facts must address the standards. Ask questions designed to get evidence related to those standards. They also show that the adopted process was followed. They, that the decision conformed the comprehensive plan, if that's part of sort of the narrative. Make sure that you're not making decisions based on opinion or gut, again, or pulling back to the standards. And as a tip, you can raise highlights from work sessions. And that's a way to include that in your findings of fact. So one thing that I would comment on is that, you know, if challenged, then the ultimate decision will be sort of deferred to unless it was arbitrary. So these findings of fact are really your, your sort of protection to show all these things that I just mentioned, to show that, yeah, you do have standards and you follow them. You did sort of ask questions designed to get you evidence about that. So here's what we did. Here's how our decision was reasonable. And then you would be, your decision would therefore be deferred to. So really important to focus on these findings of fact and make sure you're developing a great record of decision. Okay, final tips for decision-making. A couple of comments I would say are detailed deliberation informs better motions. The community, and hopefully not a judge, but a judge, on how a decision was made. So therefore, avoid vague or nonspecific motions. In other words, with someone way in the future, or maybe even not that far in the future, know what decision was made and why. Watch for bias against difficult people and look for legitimate points and solutions. Don't be afraid to say, I don't know. I say that in, I don't, I don't even know if it's the half, majority maybe, of these kinds of workshops even. Again, because much like communities and development applications, everyone's a little bit different, right? So it's okay to both be an expert and also say, I don't know. You don't need to explain or apologize for the process, for example, to a minority voter. And this is so important, I put it in bold. A lot of the times, you know, when, when we're hearing about processes that sort of went awry or, or a PC that kind of ventured away from the adopted standards, it's because a lot of the times they're worried about people not liking the outcome. But if people don't like the outcome, they're likely to attack the process. So that's why the best way to sort of protect yourself is to make sure that you're running a great process. All right, now, a quick case study on public engagement. This visual comes from Lakewood. They have, they launched this digital engagement process called Lakewood Speaks. And this was, I want to say that in twenty nineteen, it could have been seventeen, I, I forget now. But this is a summary of some of their findings from moving to more online engagement. And I want to be clear, I'm not recommending everyone does it like this. I just, I'll ultimately get to a point, so bear with me. So they decided they wanted to do some more online engagement. And they documented the outcomes, and they said, all right. So before we launched this, we had your usual, I think they did Thursday night, something like that, planning commission meetings, and so they documented their participation by age, other demographic categories, how many people, what percentage of the community, et cetera. And then when they went online, they had amazing results. They dropped their cost of participation or cost of meeting by participant, like incredible amounts. And they had a lot more engagement, not only engagement that more reflected their community, it was a higher percentage of their community, which, by the way, they saw about an eight hundred percent increase in participation. But also, I put a red arrow on this bar chart here because one of the things that I thought was most interesting was the time that they received comments. When they moved to online, they had a lot of commenting, you know, maybe right around people's lunch hour and tapered off a little bit, but some good discussions throughout the day, then a huge valley right from six to eight P M., which was when they were holding their in-person meetings. So I think that kind of speaks volumes. And again, this isn't, I don't think that this is like the one to rule them all. It's just meant to provoke some thinking on the timing and the approach of community engagement and what may be going on in people's lives and how, how to consider providing different options. Okay, to conclude some of these comments about decision-making, I would offer that a popular decision is not always good. Good isn't always popular. But when we're thinking about land use and planning and the role, especially of planning commission, it's your responsibility to protect current and future public health, safety, and welfare, even if it's not popular in the moment. Okay. So now enough for me. Let's move into some more discussion and do a few scenario questions together. So to explore some of what we just talked about, here's a hypothetical. A local developer brings updated plans to the staff the day before the hearing. There's tremendous pressure for staff to allow the applicant to make last-minute changes. What should staff do? A, quickly forward the new information to the planning commission members or elected workers and amend the staff report. B, explain to the developer why this last-minute action is not appropriate. Or C, explain that the locally adopted process is the one that must be followed to ensure staff and maybe referral agencies and boards, commissions have time to review.
C, C.
Yes. Nailed it. Great. And by the way, I have heard of A and B happening locally as well. So this is an example of the best, the best thing to do. C, good job. Okay, how about this one? An unpopular development application would likely go over a lot better if they had a better design. You decide to impose a condition of approval, a design standard, that's not adopted because you know it will calm opponents, and by the way, it'll make the project better. Is this a worthwhile and pragmatic solution?
No.
Hi, Andy. What might happen? It's a first possibility, right? So if it'll be challenged, even though you did your best to try and calm opponents, if they still don't like it and the day is done, they'll challenge you on the process. Okay. How about this one? You've been so busy, you didn't get a chance to review your packet before the hearing. That never happens, right? No, everyone's always prepared. What should you do? A, just don't show up. B, contact staff to find out if there'll be a quorum, get their advice. C, email the other board members before the meeting to get their thoughts on how you should vote. D, call your chairs, see what they think.
B.
Ah. Good. We haven't gotten to the discussion on ex parte, but flag this question. I'll remember it later. You nailed it. B's right. Next up, a citizen in the audience starts asking the applicant questions. Is this acceptable? A, yes, you can't stop or hinder free speech. Or B, no, questions must be directed or raised to the board of commission to maintain control of the proceeding.
B.
Yeah, this one, I keep it in there because I get a lot of questions about free speech. And fair enough, but truly, you, you got it right. It's about making sure that we're sticking within the process so that everyone sort of has equal treatment throughout. An opponent of a project challenges the time limit. I hear about this one a lot, by the way. Demanding the full time she needs to provide her testimony. What should the chair do? A, thank her for her testimony and remind her there is a time limit, which must be followed consistently and fairly. B, go ahead and give her another minute. C, allow her to exceed the time limit only if others in the audience will give her their time.
A, A.
Yeah. If take her on beat.
I mean, I'll say that realistically, it happens sometimes because you can't get them to shut up, but. But.
That's fair. I mean, you're right. Everyone's right. It's A, and then yes, B absolutely happens. When pressed on this, I've said, you know, you might just consider consistency. So if you are going to give her another minute, just make sure that you're then having enough time and willing, and it's okay by your rules to give everyone another minute. Also, consider precedent that you're setting and other, other related concerns. Yeah, but C is, I, I'm glad you all saw, C is something that a lot of people think is okay, but is not really a thing. So well spotted on that.
Another thing that happens, Casey, for us is sometimes in this particular, really contentious hearings, is we have other members of the public give their time to someone that's speaking. Yeah, they try to do C, and then we try to say, no, you cannot do C. So we try to outline that now ahead of time before the meeting, that that's not acceptable, but. Yeah.
Wow, this is one of the best practices. Well done. Okay, let's see how you respond on this one. It's going to get spicy. It becomes clear that the planning commission must deny a project. The applicant feels she's not been treated fairly and implies she may sue if her project isn't approved. What should the commission do? A, approve the project, but with several conditions you expect she'll not be able to meet. B, be sure the motion used to deny is clear, the staff report and discussion lays out which standards were not met. Or C, deny the project, but then have the chair follow up after to explain why it had to be denied and make sure she feels heard.
Maybe.
And we see.
Just going to offer real quick, just for anyone that has, any new members of the planning commission and the, and the board of county commissioners. We do provide suggested motions within the staff report. And we also have a script that the chair reads into the record in the beginning that does give a lot of direction on these different points too. So just some practices that we have, and then we also record. So just some practices that we have, and then we also record, um, the finding, the, the final, um, findings with the staff report. Um, so that we create that historic record for how the decisions were made.
Great. I want to, um, when we end this, I'm going to add some of those, if you don't mind me using you as an example. Uh, I'm gonna want some of that to set this year on how they're starting to bring a approach. Okay, um. Now, actually, that was perfectly done, I, uh, wish I would have clicked this sooner. This slide is meant to be a prompt of any other ideas about how to run a better meeting. Anything that you've done that's gone particularly well or, or not, you know, maybe learning, learning from failures is always good. Um, so any other comments out there about tips to run a good meeting?
The other thing that kind of fell off during COVID that we could probably start introducing again this year is, um, the approval criteria, that we have those laid out on the seats. So that, um, and our chair gives kind of direction that, um, you know, you, we're looking for comments directed on the appropriate kind of criteria that we base the decisions on. So we have the criteria available, um, you know, throughout the room and they can pick that up and it, so we, um, on top of the script, we also have some guidance for the, um, members of the community that join us too.
Yeah, I think the opening statement has done wonders in our organization of a meeting and just that if it's a public hearing, there's an opening statement, it's a whole page that I just read when we open that public hearing, but it at least lets everybody know because most don't what the process is. Here's how it's gonna go, staff's gonna give their report, then the applicant gets to talk, then you can talk, but then the applicant can respond, you know? And I think a lot of people think, oh, no, I can, if I don't argue with them now, I'll never have a chance to argue and I wanna ask a buddy, you know? And so if they understand upfront, there is the, the space in the agenda for all of these things to occur. Um, and then how it's made from there. And then we always try to, you know, when we close a public hearing and commissioners leave the room and then PC deliberates. When we, you know, do that motion, we remind everybody in the room again that, okay, now our recommendation goes to commissioners, they get to decide upon it at their next public hearing. And so I think it's just been really helpful to like explain the process and that simple little opening statement has done a lot of wonders to help people understand how that is gonna go.
Um, absolutely, and, and we do have kind of that unique, um, process that you're, are, that we have a joint public hearing, which is unique to Lake County. I don't know, Casey, if you know of any other jurisdictions that do it the way that we do it. Um, and a lot of other jurisdictions, you would have the planning commission meeting followed by a public hearing, then followed by a board of county commissioner, um, public hearing. And we combine the two. So I will be meeting with the board, um, to just kind of go over that, how that layout is because, um, but we, the public hearing is for the planning commission and the board to, to have, um, a good opportunity to ask questions and hear all the evidence and testimony on the record. But then when the planning commission goes into, or when they're ready to make their motion, the board leaves. But we'll just kind of go through that flow of the public hearing before the tenth, just so you're familiar with it. Um, but we do, we do have kind of a unique, um, we think it's kind of meeting those land use reform goals of streamlining processes. And so we're, they feel there's been really effective and efficient to have that joint meeting. So we kind of have that unique aspect, Casey.
I think one thing that's struggled with is trying to figure out, you know, you referred to the online. What time should we meet, you know? And I think we have, we moved the meeting to four o'clock years ago, but I feel like we've always had more participation then than we did when we had it at six o'clock. Plus our planning commission members were awake and, and alive still at that point. Um, but it's still not a, you know, they use, it, I, I think it won't matter when you have it, you're always gonna have people who say they aren't allowed to give their input. So one thing that I think would be helpful, and I don't know, Casey, if you have examples from other communities on how they're reaching people. Because one thing that's always been difficult in this community is like how you get the word out about things that are happening and be able to receive input. When there isn't, you know, the, there isn't the ability for everybody to show up to the meeting or, you know, we just have a really hard time reaching people in this community, like reaching all the people. There's always somebody who's like, I've never heard that was happening ever, ever, and it's been going on for ten years. So it's just like, how do we, how do you reach those and are there strategies that other communities are using for that online? You know, um, reach that you referred to?
There's one, one tool that we've been trying to kind of, um, utilize, and I think in looking at the cards that I passed out to the commissioners, we could probably wordsmith this a little bit better and Dave will be getting these cards too. When you get approached and this kind of also leads into like the ex parte communication piece that Casey's gonna talk about, we made business cards that when members of the community approach you, um, and wanna talk on something that you're going to be rendering a recommendation or a decision on. It is a card for them to know how to express their opinions. But the cards right now say, if you can't be at the meeting, you know, we still want your input and here's how to do that. So you could always, um, I don't wanna get into ex parte because I know that's coming up, but we're also gonna look at maybe word, wordsmithing some other cards too. So anytime that you're out in the public and people discover you're a member of the planning commission or obviously everyone knows who our new county commissioners are, and your residents approach you, you have something to give to them. One, you know, card says if you, if you can't be present, we can still get your ideas, thoughts and opinions.
They just need to be directed to staff.
To, to staff. And then we have, we want to, I think, wordsmithing one that also just, um, helps us prevent ex parte, so. But any other, like, um, Heather says, I think we're always challenged with how do we reach everyone? Um, and you know, there's been, um, some, maybe some conversation in the community concerned about backcountry, knowing this was decades long, um, over a decade-long process to get us there. You know, it, it's, it's like, gosh, it's really surprising, um, but, but inevitable too. To know that, you know, there's, there's still concerns in that community that, that aren't aware of what backcountry, um, zone cha, zoning was and, and even though it was a really, um, big scope of work and took a little, you know, the whole time I've been in the department to get done, so, um, but that's a really great question. But that's an example.
Yeah, because if that, their graphs are showing that they see people engage more in the middle of the day. Like, I can't imagine that's having a meeting in the middle of the day, those people are just like getting on their phone and able to engage in a moment in the middle of the day on their lunch break, you know? So like, I'm just trying to figure out how it is that they used the, those metrics to then determine how to gather community input.
Folks are bored at work.
Yeah, I know, right? So they're not coming to your meeting, but they're engaging somehow, so I guess I'm curious how they used those metrics.
Yeah, yeah, uh, that was well spotted there. Um, so they, they all, something that I didn't say was they, um, moved to like an online comment approach. So everything that was gonna be on the agenda was posted, they extended the window to make comments to, I think, like two weeks. And so then people could go on and comment ahead of time and so could decision-makers, so they would have like their council, city council members could go on and respond to comments. And all of it then was also timestamped and they went so far as to, um, allow commenters to see like which council members saw their comment and which didn't. There's, they include a lot of data that you could get access to, but the point is that they posted it ahead of time, had a really open, like open season kind of approach to leaving comments. And it allowed for some of that, um, discussion to happen. So when the time the actual, um, meeting happened, um, there was almost kind of less to discuss. I think they even said their meetings, no, no, they're still, I wouldn't say that they shortened, but I think that you're, you're right. It was, that's probably what led to like the eight hundred and whatever it was increase in participation was probably because of that offering in particular.
Was that a legislative process that they were using that tool for?
Yeah, because how would you do that ex parte without sorta?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good point for legislative processes.
And, and we did that somewhat for, um, backcountry and, um, short-term rental that we were, you know, we had an online portal that we read a lot of.
Well, and we're doing it now with one community project.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that makes sense.
Yeah, and, um, but for those legislative changes, um, short terminals and backcountry, we did have, we were capturing that like through an online comment portal too.
Yeah, and we also are, um, working on a, uh, we, uh, the division on local government are working on an inclusive community engagement guide that I've been a little on the periphery of, so now I'm wishing I would have reviewed it right before this. Um, but we're working on a, an engagement guide to support exactly what you were talking about, how can we do, what are some strategies? What are other communities doing on how to be more effective with outreach? Um, that's just, it's tough. Um, I remember talking to someone who was saying, um, that they were, uh, they were in Denver Water Service area, who went through that whole like lead pipe replacement, um, project. And they were saying that in, they had a neighbor who just hadn't been paying attention, it wasn't until they received a Brita filter in the mail, they were like, hey, what is Denver Water up to? What aren't they telling us? And it was this whole conspiracy, um, when it was, I mean, Denver Water, uh, they said had been sending out flyers and they had their webpage, they did everything that you would expect. But, you know, to your point, you, there's always going to be someone who just, you know, didn't know, wasn't, just didn't, didn't, didn't sort of see or engage with the information. That's something I always keep in mind and I'm like, man, do we need to send everyone little gifts or something?
Yeah, open the package.
Um, one thing that's not maybe necessarily a vision for a better meeting, but something that has been, that we changed in, uh, around twenty twenty-two was the creation of the community development team. So before an applicant even ever, um, uh, applies for any kind of development application, they meet with any, um, review agency, um, relative to their development. So that's Parkville Water, Leadville Sand, Fire, um, Level Lake County Fire, Public Works, um, law enforcement, um, Parks, Rec and Open Space, this oils conservation group, um, it may be whomever will be part of that development review. And so before they even make an application, they're really advised on, um, based on their concept. Any, anything that they want them to be cognizant of, and what we've heard from the planning commission and the board is that this has started us off on getting, um, a lot better applications, even at the sketch phase of, or even for conditional use permit, if it's got a lot of impact associated with it. So, um, you know, that's just another tool that we use to try to increase communication and making sure that we're giving applicants a lot of great guidance at the concept stage of development. To kind of help.
We, yeah, I, um, I should, I feel compelled to mention, um, that, I hope you don't mind, but we talk about, um, Lake County and Lake County lead build partnerships a lot, by the way. It's like a well we keep returning to, just because, um, and just in case this is news to anyone, a lot of the things that you all do are really best practice and solid. Um, so we're constantly talking about you guys, or at least I am. Um, and we have gotten, I love watching people react when I talk about your combined, um, process. And it seems to blow a lot of minds that just didn't even know that that was a thing. And I always end my comments by reminding them they should go talk to their attorney because I know that you all did a lot of work to make sure you have the right script and like everything was lined up, um, so that it works. Uh, but yeah, I do mention that and I think, um, now my memory's failing, there's one other community who is looking at adopting it, I can't remember who it was at the moment, so hopefully I do, I'll let you know. Yeah, so I think it's a cool approach, I agree, efficient. Alright.
I feel, I just wanna say, I feel like I've, um, not seen this done very well in our county. But doing hearings at the beginning of a meeting instead of at the end, I think really is just kind to the citizens who want to participate. Because then they don't need to sit through all of the operations or whatever we're going over in a meeting. They get to attend for the thing that they are most passionate about and want to participate in, and then they can leave. So if we are having all of our hearings at the end of a meeting, which is what I've seen almost every hearing I've seen recently, at the end, then somebody has to sit there for potentially, well, like with city council the other night, it was like three hours before they even started their hearing.
I have always wondered that, I mean, we do technically get our business out of the way, but it's short, three minutes long, like we don't take an hour to go through the minutes.
That's lovely, I'm just saying, in general, when there are meetings and hearings combined.
Yeah, generally, we only have one item, like if it's a big hearing, that's the item on the agenda.
Yeah, I love that.
I mean, we may have a, a minutes to a period that takes thirty seconds, but that's, we usually move right down into that, I mean, the only thing we could do is save updates to the end, but sometimes I think the staff updates piece is really important for everybody in the room to hear anyway, so that they know, hey, and by the way, there's another one coming up, so you should put that on your, on your calendar. So I don't know that we necessarily, luckily, have that issue right now, um, on ours, but I agree with you, I have been, es- especially, um, on the cities, have been there where there's like the, the business takes an hour and then the public hearings are at the end and there's all these department reports and all that. And I think that that's because it's, um, city council and not planning and zoning.
Yeah, I re, I realize that's not necessarily true for this context. I'm just saying in general, because we also have with different hats and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And these meetings don't go well.
Part of the, again, that joint process, so that when we're bringing the decision to you for you to take action on, there's not a public hearing, another hearing associated, somebody gets on your agenda. We'll be bringing the recommendation from the planning commission to you, um, along with, uh, the rationale behind the, the recommendation. So when you, when it does get on your agenda, it, it's an actionable item and, and you don't have the hearing. So it'd be a little bit different, but absolutely, I, I went for a building code adoption and, 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 I think it was twelve thirty, eleven o'clock, so I can totally appreciate.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, totally. Yeah, okay, great discussion. Now we'll talk about legal and ethical issues and that joint process, I'm glad that that came up because please know that the way some of that scenario questions are written are a li, a little different, but still, I think, applicable. And, at least, I don't know, educational. Again, uh, we're gonna be thinking about differences between legislative type actions and quasi-judicial type, um, type actions. And I also wanted to mention, maybe some of you were thinking, hey, haven't, you haven't talked about them all, because there are also administrative actions. No, I have not. Um, so just to spend a moment there, um, to consider a blurred spectrum of actions, so we have legislative, there's more discretionary decision-making, bigger impact of public comments, quasi-judicials, more in the middle, and administrative is where we have much like, you know, there's less impacted public comments really directly related to, because there's so much less discretion in decision-making, it's really just about, um, almost robotically applying certain requirements and moving something through a process. So if you'll remember, that was one of the, um, options on that slide about, uh, delegation of roles that, um, using administrative processes more, and there are pros and cons to everything, of course. Um, but using administrative processes more can be, uh, an efficiency approach and is very appropriate for things where staff can handle, there's not much, um, discretion in decision-making. Another way to visualize legislative versus quasi-judicial is, um, master plans or comp plans or legislative type actions, also comprehensive zoning or zoning text amendments. It gets a little squishy with piecemeal rezonings because of sort of a, a nuance in how they're able to be challenged, makes them also sort of quasi-judicial. And then clearly quasi-judicial when we get to special exceptions, variants, subdivision approvals or permit issuance. So clearly that's dealing with a person or a property and applying rules. Alright, here we are, ex parte, we've already been talking about it. Um, this is a lengthy definition and yes, I am going to painstakingly walk us through it. Um, there's a lot going on, but it's just too important. So ex parte contact is any written or verbal communication that's initiated outside of a regularly noticed public hearing. It's happening between an official with decision-making authority and one or more of the parties, but not all the parties about a subject that is under or about to be under consideration by that official that seeks to influence or present information about that subject. That's a mouthful, but ex parte is pretty important. Um, the goal here is to preserve public confidence and due process. So the board official should ensure that the public and interested parties have the opportunity to know and respond to all information, so that we all are playing from the same playbook. Um, as that board is making its decision. So, enough's done. What do we do, um, if someone attempts ex parte? Um, this happens a lot, like you. Like you've already mentioned, you're out in the community. People know what your role is or they learn what your role is. And boy, do they have thoughts. Um, so you know, we tend to give rather conservative guidance in this, in these sessions. Um, so talk more amongst yourselves, talk to staff, talk, talk to your attorney. But what we tend to say is stop the person, explain why the contact is inappropriate, disclose the contact first to staff, then again, meeting, recuse, leave the room, maybe, um, consider adopting formal procedures. Now, um, into some examples of ways to deal with this. Uh, Chape County has an explanation on their website for those who might happen upon it. Or they can point people to, yeah, go check out more information on our website. Um, how do you know when, um, an application is received and you can no longer discuss it? So here's an example from Littleton. I'm, I'm not, oh, I'm, I'm searching my memory, but coming up short on what you all do. Uh, but here's an example from Littleton. Their staff sends out a notice to the planning commission as soon as they receive an application. So obviously that's time stamped and they consider that as when, um, something is about to be under consideration. Uh, because that's a little bit of fuzzy area and, um, Colorado attorneys disagree on what that means. And so the, really the important thing is to follow what your attorney says. Um, so that'll be the thing to do. So this is an example of how Littleton has decided to draw that line. Others do it a little differently. Um, okay. Ethical scenario. Run a site visit before a hearing and an owner or rep meets you just to let you in the gate, does not talk with you, but does shadow you. And you're pretty sure one of the neighbors has seen you. What do you do? A, you don't need to stir up suspicion. You didn't talk with them. So it's fine. Um, it's not ex parte. B, disclose it at the hearing, um, that they let you in, but you didn't discuss the project and proceed to vote. C, call staff ahead of time to give them a heads up and get advice. D, uh, just don't do that ever again. No more site visits. And here's B.
C and B. I have B. Don't you do both? You let staff and then you also have to disclose?
Yes, that staff's probably until you disclose. So those do kind of lead right into the other, right? Um, unless it was sort of egregious or violated, um, any of the rules. And then it would probably just be the first part disclosing and then maybe not proceeding to vote. But that's, now I'm fighting the hypothetical. Yeah, yeah, you're right. See, always, uh, think of staff first. They've got your back. Um, problems happen and, um, so then you just sort of go through your lines of defense to figure out the plan, which will mean starting with staff. Okay. Sounds like I could replace my picture of the city of Wheat Ridge with maybe Lake County business card. Um, maybe Googling that later. So, um, now here's a chance for any other ideas or tips. In my mind, um, ex parte and site visits can be a bit of a sand trap, but also it can be really necessary. We're talking about land. Um, so what are any other ideas or tips related to ex parte?
I'm in love for Chris to chime in. The one thing that I will mention that we have done in the past, when we've had, um, we've conducted site visits with all of us. And what we do is we all go, we, um, record it. Um, so we introduce it as part of the record. Um, and we provide guidance that, you know, um, the, um, on, on what kind of communication we're going to have onsite. We record it and then we make it part of the record, but we go as one group, um, all together.
Do you allow the public to, to go on the site visit with them?
No, we haven't done that. You know, we worked with Erin Smith, um, the, before Chris, um, was, uh, providing us with guidance. And so she said keeping it to the planning commission and the board and the public did not come to that part. Um, but it was just informational. Like, um, we went to, um, there was a gravel operation that was being, um, proposed at Birdseye. Um, and so the applicant just walked us through where different, um, parts of the operation were going to be. And, um, there weren't any questions, um, posed. It was more just informational. So the planning commission and the board did not pose questions to the applicant unless they were just clarifying questions. Like you said, northwest, but is it actually northeast? So it was like logistical kind of questions so that, and then we, we, um, had a statement that we recorded to the record at the time that they had conducted a joint site visit. But no, um, other than logistical information about where things were located on the site, um, was all that was shared as part of the record. But we didn't engage in any kind of communication between the applicant and the planning commission or the board. We did the same with the southern fire station. So, um, when, uh, they wanted to get everybody boots on the ground, because this other fire station had to have conditional use permit. So we all went out to look at the layup of land and, and the location and kind of visual impact and, and, and those kinds of things. Where it was going to be located. Um, so we've done it twice to have site visits. Um, but we encourage, in the past, we've encouraged if, if we do have something coming up, that it would be really beneficial that we do it as a whole group and we record it. So that's been our guidance in the past.
You know, technically I think we have to look at whether there is an exception under the, at the meetings law for that.
Yeah.
Um, because you're there to discuss county business essentially. So if that comes up again, let's make sure we put our heads together and, and determine whether or not there is any exception for that.
Okay.
Um, but now a hundred percent agree that if you're going to do a site visit, that it should be everybody at the same time. So you all get the same information.
And you know, and as I'm thinking about this actually, I know we posted it. And maybe we did make it open to anyone that wanted to go, because we had bans here when we went out to Birdseye.
Yeah.
And I think we did post it.
I don't think we ever excluded anything. We post it. We did have to post it.
That's what I was going to say. That, yeah.
And I, and we did, we did allow, but, but again, we didn't, you know, there was direction given to everyone there that we were going to keep it.
But you were actually just, yeah, discussed it.
It was not public hearing. Public hearing would not be open until the meeting was very clear.
If the public's going to be there, you need to make sure that they understand they can't talk.
Yeah, that it's not an interactive process.
There was a script given to us by Erin that we read before we loaded into, um, the, uh, transportation that we had onsite. We all went together. Nobody, you know, so we went as a group. We had transportation ready. When we got onsite, we read it again and we, you know, as we started the recording, gave direction again. And then, um, again, everybody came back and, and you know, everybody knew that we didn't talk amongst ourselves. Um, or anything like that. It was strictly informational. So it'd be, yeah, we definitely had to be very, like you're right, we did allow anyone to come. And we did, we did post it, but we worked really close with Erin to do it. So.
Well, and I'll say that like, um, there's a lot of times when this happens, when people, I mean, not that, but, um, people want to talk to you about something and it can even be something that staff hasn't received an application on yet, but it's coming.
Yes.
And you know it's coming. And although technically it's not in place, so technically you're allowed to talk to them. I think it's a terrible idea. I think that if, we live in a really small community. And if people believe that decisions are being made outside of a public hearing and outside of that process, um, it's, it isn't fair and it isn't, it, you know, it is a transparent. And I think that if, if a decision-making person or even, um, planning commission member cannot or has their mind made up before they walk into a meeting, they should have to recuse, they should recuse themselves. Because if you can't walk into that meeting saying, I'm going to listen to both sides and see what I think. I think then, then you're causing everybody, including the process, um, a disservice. Because I think, and Chris obviously can say this, but if somebody, if a decision is made and it's the way you wanted it and you didn't recuse yourself and should have, then somebody can challenge that decision now. And you've put that decision in jeopardy just because you insisted on staying in there and voting. So I think that that's just a really big thing to just remember. Obviously in my line of work, I get people all the time and I say, okay, well, if I talk to you about this and it comes to the county for any kind of like approvals, I'm going to be recusing myself. So I will not be, I'm thinking. You know, so like I've just learned in my own jobs, like, okay, I know that if we're going to have this conversation about a subdivision or is this land subdivisible or is this this, like I can help you with that, but I will not participate or be a part of the planning process for that. And so I just think, just as an example for others to be able to use, like it's been really easy for me. If somebody comes and says, Heather, I heard they're going to do this subdivision up there. What's the deal? And I'm like, well, you don't want to talk to me about it because otherwise I can't sit there and be at the public hearing for it. But who you can talk to is Anne, and there will be this opportunity and this opportunity. And I think we can give them the information of where their opportunities lie and where they can come and when the meetings are and how the process will work. Um, and so a lot of times I explain the process and this is how it goes and this is where you'll do it, but I don't discuss the actual application. I feel like it works pretty well.
Where's the line drawn? Like they can say what they want. You just can't.
I think you stop. If I continue to listen to your opinion, I will have to recuse myself.
Okay.
That's what I said.
And so I was just going to ask you finish. I was going to say what she said. Because they've been through the ex parte training with me, and it's pretty much that no, if, if they want to talk to you, that's it. You kind of have to stop them and just say, no, because they're, e- even though technically as you put, there might not be an application in place. If there's a chance that they are planning to bring an application, it's much better to say, hey, really want to hear your thoughts on this, but be more appropriate for you to, to fill Anne in on what you're thinking and let it go through that process instead. Uh, because it, it is, it, it's very risky and the problem is it's, it's a whole due process thing with this. Because you're potentially impacting people's property rights, you know, in, in terms of how they want to use their property. And so it is, it, it's going to be difficult to navigate that. Cause you all, y'all are all members of the community for a long time and you know a lot of people and they're going to want to talk to you about all this stuff.
And if they don't want to stop talking and you're stuck on a chairlift with them.
La, la, la.
Well, then you're going to come and, and you're going to have to disclose that. But I think, and then it's up to you to, I mean, ultimately it's up to the individual to recuse themselves. But I would strongly say that if you feel like it's a possibility that that would jeopardize the situation later on, that you just recuse yourself if it's a problem. But I have had really good luck and obviously you guys will deal with it way more being commissioners, but I've had really good luck being like, whatever you have to say is probably super valid. And I want to be able to hear it in the public hearing. So I have to tell you that we can't talk about it, but this is where I want you to do it. This is how I want you to give your opinion. I've had really good luck with people being like, oh, okay, I get it.
Yeah.
And not pursuing it.
And I hope that people would respect that. They would understand.
I think if you explain it in that way, like we want to know what you're saying, but.
Well, and I love that you explain the consequences of when you, when you bring this to me, I no longer get to make a decision.
Yeah, that would really shut someone down in a serial aisle safely.
It does. I mean, it does. I mean, it happens all the time and I just have to be like, I can't talk to you.
And keep in mind that a lot of times when people are really anxious to talk to you, those are going to be your contentious hearings. Those are going to be the times.
And those are the times you want to stay on, not being here.
Those are, you know, people are very passionate about wanting to talk to you. Those are the times that we've got to be really mindful that we preserve due process and, and we make, uh, you make decisions that are defensible and, and that we, you know, we can, we can provide, um, good record that, that we followed our process. So, um, those are, I, I know those are the hard ones, but those are, those are the ones that are going to.
Oh, so we should, we should follow up after this about, um, possible future meetings with members of the community who want to talk about certain developments that are happening.
Yeah.
And Anne's great at that, so.
You know, and our Chris and, and, uh, when, if, if somebody is approaching you with a great development, um, proposal, that's really what our staff is for, to help them and give them all the resources and all of, because those are eventually going to come to you for a decision. And so it's, it, it's a slippery slope to have conversations, even if it's down the road. And we typically, you know, we have a couple of developers over time that love to try to, um, find those opportunities. But, but they, we explain to them as much as anyone else too, is that you could put your decisions in jeopardy, you know? So it's, it's no benefit to them either.
I mean, I've even, I remember, I don't remember which one it was, but we had a development application where they bought the land after talking to county commissioners about this development potential. And then they come and they don't get through the process. I don't even remember if it came all the way through. But it's like, well, I talked to these commissioners and they said it was okay, you know? So it's just like, that's where it gets, in, in its super gray. Like somebody leaves a conversation thinking you supported it and maybe you were just listening, you know? And so I just think it's like one of those things where you just, unfortunately, we have to watch everything.
Well, these are, you know, you guys keep bringing up developers, but we have to give the same exact considerations to people who might be opposed to something as well.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Absolutely. So either way, so certainly both sides of the aisle and both sides of.
Yeah, others, I've always told people that you can't, you can't really explain due process to somebody in a serial line safely. And you can try, but if nothing else works, tell them that the county attorney has told you, you cannot talk to them.
That's right.
Yeah. Go take it up with Chris. She said I can't.
Let them blame Chris.
I'm used to that.
Really? It'll make you unfast.
Yeah.
So this makes you obvious, but the same rules apply to us talking amongst ourselves?
Yes, yes.
Very great question.
And I think that's why those site visits, for instance, where it's so important, like no individual person should have more information than the other counterparts, right? So you should be all gathering the information at the same time. So we shouldn't be discussing a hearing that's coming up or you and I before it happens.
And that's information and debating.
Yeah, exactly.
And pros and cons.
Exactly. Right. Like influencing, uh.
Which is why it was like, hey, you should call your chair and see which way you should vote. Yeah. I do that. I'm not going to tell you. Chris told me not to.
Yeah. So a really great point. That's right.
But I, I feel like it's like one that seems like a super easy, obvious thing, but it's really difficult in our small town.
And sometimes it surprises you, right? Sometimes she's coming at you and all of a sudden they're like, wait a minute, no, I can't, I can't. But, but, um, uh, Melissa, Cici and I are always available to be really responsive. The other thing to, to let you know if, if anyone has any questions, the public has any questions, you have any questions. As soon as we accept an application, you will get that, um, overview sheet with a direct link to the application. And we post those on the website. So the public, the minute we've accepted any land development applications that are pending, the public sees them as well. And they're on our website. So, um, if anybody has a question, check, you know, check with staff. And then we've got, we've got them posted. So you know.
That's the whole point that said extraordinary patience.
Yeah, that's where that comes in.
Do you think there's an ex parte issue with members of the deciding body speaking to staff outside the hearing process?
Outside the hearing process. So what we have done in the past is if, um, uh, prior to decision and after the recommendation has been made or just during, after they've accepted the application.
Yeah, after the application's been accepted while it's pending, um, a member of the board or the planning commission wants to ask you a question about that application, is that ex parte?
I would love your and Chris's thoughts on that. So what we have done is as long I can talk, um, to each of the commissioners or the planning commissioners individually to understand, like if they have clarifying questions about the application, if they have direct concerns, those kinds of things. So I've never considered that ex parte. I've always been able to engage with each of them individually.
Yeah. And I think where it is nuanced though, is if you end up with the commissioner who has very specific concerns or whatever, or wants to try to direct staff to push their report in a certain way. My recommendation then would be to, you know, and say, we're going to schedule a work session or something on it. So that everybody hears it at the same time, but they're not trying to do an in run around this process.
So, um, so, so more about the process, but not a work session about an application, more about.
No, the process. Yeah, type of thing. Yeah. And that's been, now to, yeah, and that's great. But that's what I'm saying is because you, you have run into that with us, I believe. And so that's a difficult thing for staff to navigate too. When you have a commissioner that has very strong opinions and they need to become, those opinions need to be provided in the.
Absolutely.
Need.
Particularly, um, we've been approached at different times with, um, thoughts about, um, the depth of review on a particular topic or, um, the process itself, the joint hearing process. Um, we've had, you know, and so we can't be directed by staff unilateral, or by the board, obviously as staff unilaterally on changing process or anything like that. So those would be, um, you know, and the other thing, um, I know Cici usually says in her training, if, if, you know, um, again, making our decisions based on our code and our standards, there's always a possibility at some point about changing those standards, um, or amending our code. So, um, but you know, we have to stay within our code and you'll see that in the staff report that's coming to you. You're going to give guidance on exactly what those criteria and where those rails are. You're gonna give guidance on exactly what those criteria and where those rails are and what we're allowed to look at that's in our code. But those are flexible, and those can change. So if we're finding, I, I would, um, encourage you though, to let's get through that compliance process because we're really gonna help us understand what in our code might need to be, um, managed and changed. We'll have a whole list of recommendations about, um, anything that needs to be done. But that's the place that we can make the changes, is, is amending our code eventually. Thank you.
Sorry, Casey, yours.
I'm here. That was a great discussion. Um, and I, I welcome it. I really, these are so much better when things like that happen, and it's not just me talking from a, I don't know, video box. Um, I was thinking while I was listening, I really like how you all came at the ex parte from, uh, um, how do we redirect and like harness the energy even of people who are very opposed? You know, because that's still energy. Are any of you familiar with the show Parks and Rec?
Yes.
It's, um, it's one of my favorite, I, one of my favorites is, uh, lines from that is from the pilot episode when she's like, Leslie Knope is like, yeah, you know, I just know that our community members are so passionate. So when I hear people yelling at me, I just hear passion. But I was like, I'm gonna keep that in mind and see if I can make it stick when I'm being yelled at, but. I like that, I like the idea anyway. Okay, um, a few more things to get through. So moving into conflicts of interest, big picture. There's a conflict of interest when you're a member of the governing body and you have a personal or private interest in the matter proposed or pending before you. Um, if you do have a conflict of interest, Colorado law requires you to do all of the following. Disclose to staff and at the hearing, do not vote, and do not attempt to influence the votes of others. Uh, there's an exception, and my notes are hidden from me, um, but maybe Chris can overbite. Uh, but there is an exception. If you're in a bind, which is the body cannot act without that person participating, then there is a sort of a safety valve where you have to write, uh, it's like in writing in advance of the hearing, like, to the secretary of state, I believe. Um, so if you get into that situation, again, go to staff, and they'll know how to direct you. Um, but the point of that except, on this slide line, or side, whoa, slide, is just to let you know that if you do get into a bind when there's a conflict and you just can't act and you don't know if there's a way forward, there is, very limited, but there is a way forward. Okay, um, looking at the time, I'm going to move us rather quickly when these ethical scenarios come up, um, but I do just wanna touch on the points that they're making. So an applicant claims one of the council members has a conflict because he always wants to know on her project. That council member should not vote on this project because of the appearance of a conflict and the importance of due process, true or false? Yeah, that's what, this one's tricky, just in the spirit of moving us along, tricky. Um, but that's sort of getting at the difference between, uh, like, I mean, maybe there's a bias which could present its own issues, um, but a conflict of interest, no, a little different. You're convinced one of your fellow planning commission members has a conflict. What do you do? A, talk with that member at least a few days before the hearing? B, set up an informal meeting with a few other members, see if they can help you explain this conflict to the person? C, talk with your staff for guidance? D, raise your concern in the meeting before that proposal is heard?
C.
Totally, yes.
I will say this is come up before. We've run through this before.
And there's, there are, there are some communities who tell me, oh, no, we'd be fine just bringing it up. I, I wouldn't mind talking to, you know, my fellow planning commission members. Great, you know? If that, if that can resolve it, you know, what I, how I tend to react is, okay, um, in some communities, that can work. But yeah, you all nailed it with going right to C. Okay, open meetings, um, some quick comments here. So we have the Colorado Sunshine Law. Public notice is required, so you all already touched on this, um, earlier, talking about site visits. But, um, public notice is required for meetings where formal action occurs, public business is discussed, hint, hint, um, or a quorum is present, I guess also, two hint hints out from the earlier discussion. Um, minutes are required when formal action occurs. And a suggested rule of practice, again, in these trainings, we get like real conservative just by way of protecting you all and your processes. Um, so suggested rule of practice, just keep everything open, noticed minutes for formal action. Why? Public policies, public business. Um, there are lots of ways that, um, I've heard of communities handling this kind of a thing, including some even having like a social calendar, um, so that it can be like public when like, don't be alarmed, a couple members are going to be at this wedding, by the way. That's come up before. Okay, digging in. After a rough public hearing, the planning commissioners agree to grab a beer to relax and unwind. Any issues or concerns? A, this could be seen as a public, an unnoticed public meeting at which, uh, they may have discussed public business. B, the perception could be this is where the real work gets done and decisions are made. C, it's okay after a public meeting, but not before a public hearing.
Okay.
A and B.
Yeah, I was gonna say, to some extent, A and B. Just because especially with the experience here, it is the perception, everybody presumes that.
That's how we're doing it.
Two of you together or whatever, that it is, y'all are talking about candidate business.
Yeah.
Absolutely, completely agree. And that's where certain communities have decided to do things like have a social calendar, things like that. Just like, ah, we're gonna err on the side of just being super transparent, everybody. Okay, nicely done. Um, just a little bit left here in our time together. Uh, the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act protects government officials when acting within the scope of their duties. However, there are ways to lose your immunity. Uh, prejudging a matter, maybe some of you are having others, uh, earlier comments in your head about, um, not coming into the room prejudging things, because you can lose your immunity. So prejudging a matter, engaging in ex parte contact, making a decision that violates established laws. It kinda gets worse as we come across the list. Acting beyond the scope of your authority, ignoring or going against publicly given legal advice, and ignoring or act outside, uh, the bounds of established procedures or ordinances. So all that's to say, adhere to the process, um, and that helps to ensure that all will be well. Okay, um, here is a scenario where an elected official, a big longstanding community member calls up the newest planning commissioner or councilor a few days before a public hearing to give background information on an application. Um, is there an issue with this approach? Just giving information, remember. A, while the intention may be noble, um, this is ex parte. That's a problem. B, this is inappropriate because the new board member may feel pressured to vote in alignment with the elected official's view. C, as long as the elected official gives background, um, this new member probably doesn't know and doesn't tell them how to vote, it's fine.
A and B.
A and B.
Yeah.
Can you guys brush these? Um, now, this will be a little different because of your unique process. But, um, after the vote at a public, at a planning commission hearing, one of the members decides to testify at the Board of County Commissioners meeting to represent the minority opinion. Is this okay? A, a planning commission member doesn't give up her right to testify as a citizen, and it could be helpful. B, it can be divisive to allow the losing side to essentially appeal their decision. C, if the board remands the decision back to the PC to reconsider the proposal, um, then that member would not be allowed to hear the matter because they engaged in ex parte.
Yeah, so B and C. C for sure.
I would say both B and C. Sometimes there are others who say, yeah, and it's also not really fair. That's like two bites at the apple for one person. So there's like the appealing, and then also, you know, being on the, the idea is being on the planning commission is kind of extra responsibility that not every, um, member of the community gets. So that's like two bites at the apple by being, I mean, maybe you lost of your opinion, but then getting to appeal again is, so maybe a fair decision. Now, this is meant to test the flip. An elected official, uh, decides to attend the planning commission public hearing for a controversial project outside of, and provide public testimony. Now, again, you have a bit of a different process, but if you'll bear with me. A, the elected official in this case does not give up his right to testify as a citizen, and it can be helpful, same as A before. B, it's okay as long as the planning commission has the final decision-making power in the project. Uh, C, this could be perceived as the elected official influencing the planning commission, and it could also be perceived as prejudging of the project before it comes to the board or commission. Nicely done, and we've made it. Okay, thank you. We've covered a lot of information, all the way back to why plan, authority to, uh, roles and responsibilities, integrating various topics into your plans and policies, carefully considering meeting management, leaving good, uh, records of decision and fact, fact-minding, uh, talking about ethical issues, lots of that together. That was, uh, fun, you were letting me list it in. Um, lots of resources. I would end by saying, um, recommended next training sessions. I always like to pitch talking with water providers, fire, police, assessors, any service providers, really, as well as a variety of independent learning, especially, um, if you're feeling new to the game. I mentioned, uh, in bullets earlier, the American Planning Association of Colorado has lots of good information, Colorado Counties Inc. always has lots of good information. Um, and we can also offer up more thoughts depending on what your areas of interest are. Um, so given that, I was, uh, happy and sad to get to revisit a picture of my old dog. So there she is, near Lake County. I think technically not in it, but this was as close as she got. Um, so thank you so much for, um, spending time with me this afternoon. I really, um, appreciate your attention and the discussion I got to hear. I always love promoting Lake County because you all just do such good work. Um, so thank you for, um, being such a good example that, that I like to brag on all the time. Um, and just let me know if you have any questions. I'll be sending my slides, um, so that you can share them. And other than that, we stand by to, um, support you in whatever your future questions or goals are.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, Casey.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye. Yeah, I thought we'd just ask if there's any questions that can follow up or, like, otherwise, it's been a long two hours, right?
So free questions, just, um, I'll save most of them for later, we're all done.
Okay.
They're more for individual people.
Okay, yeah, and anything that, um, anybody in the planning department can, we're always available. If you have any questions, um, whether you're on a board or, um, just in general, we're, we're here to field those, so. Thank you.
Welcome to our universe, welcome, hell.
One of these, uh, dividing incorporate today. Okay, it should be on space. Yeah, okay, I'm gonna go back to what we're talking. All right. Yes.
Cool, well, I, should I go?
We good, we ready to start? Okay, uh, oh, we're already in session nine.
We can just say we're coming back from.
Okay, coming back from break.
Coming back, here we go. Um, with a little kind of presentation update on where the EDC has been and is going for 2025. Keep this one short and brief, we're a little behind, but wanted to give you a little recap of 24, so we can go to the next slide. Should I do it, or?
I can circle it.
Yes, too, doing the job. Yeah, so 24, 23, I know Commissioner Tharp has some idea because she was there and a part of some of those pieces. Um, 23 was a big step back, try to understand where we have been. Cause 22, the, we had a bunch of folks quit in November, and so we kind of had to realign and take a hard look. And the, and the EDC is 11 years old at this point?
Uh, yes, at least.
And officially, it was torn before that in terms of its corporation, but in terms of its operating, yeah, at least a lot of the time.
And I think when we got to that point, we just, the quick down and dirty is that we had really realized that there was a lot of start and go, start and stop, kind of trying to get momentum, trying to find that groove, and really trying to, we wanted to step back and understand, A, what happened in 22, but then also where does the EDC need to go forward? So 22 was a big strategy year, 24 was a lot of capacity building, trying to take what we learned. So you might have heard some of this commissionally, which is, our takeaways were maybe we needed a slightly different model of an EDC than we had had previously, and a little bit more collective impact-driven. We needed to understand what that meant, but we spent a lot of time, time digging into that concept of, I think, how we're going to tackle things collectively and how can we be an instrument in that process? Um, and 24 became kind of the focus of how do we engage that and how do we, you will just to kind of step back. In 22, Main Street, Chamber, and the EDC were all together in one house. And it, it does appear that that was a little bit much for that to handle, and there was some confusion on whose lanes were whose. So a lot of 23 was also, our board sort of getting to really tackle, what are these different lanes? What does it mean to be an EDC? What does it mean to be an EDC in Leadville? Um, Chamber and Main Street were now no longer a part of that, separate, and really kind of clarifying those lanes. So then we dig into 24 and kind of put that into action. And a lot of that, I'll be honest with you, is sitting in a lot of meetings, kind of like you are right now, trying to take in where everything has been. So a lot of us, our time was capacity building in that regard of work sessions for the V O C C, attending city council meetings, meetings and engagements, coalitions, storm, you know, whatever, just numerous different, like, oh, see, being present and really trying to wrap ourselves around that. And also in March, March, end of March, beginning of April, um, the county was able to do a community builders engagement, and it became clear from there that there was the strong likelihood that that was gonna move forward as a city-county collaborative effort. And I think in that place, our board and, and the EDC really understood that we wanted to kind of be a part of that process and not jump out and do anything before that process had a chance to really take hold as well. So we tried to do a lot of the, kind of that capacity building pieces. We did have a lot of small business engagements, some pieces there. Focused on the steering committee was the other piece. So the steering committee, just so you have that full picture, I'm not sure if we've had this conversation. That was one of the pieces that came out of 23's work was to start to build. The EDC is, and maybe the steering committee in those pieces is more of a backbone collective impact model, and that, that idea being to bring a steering committee that would have county manager, city administrator, CEO of the EDC, of the hospital, and the nonprofit sector, CMC, and the school district all at the table. So we currently have that team meeting monthly. And that was another kind of capacity building. And I think a good year spent kind of working through some of the, the pieces there of getting that team kind of starting to move around their role and what they could, how they could actually organize that group together. So that steering committee group. The idea originally was, hey, we could really get these group, this executive level leadership in a room together and start to work through some of the things in advance, from funding campaigns to like financial campaign strategies to what's going to go on the, what's going to go on the ballot this year, and really be able to talk through some of those things and give each other some heads up so that we could work together more collectively. So the year was spent really capacity building with that group. It's in a strong place, or stronger place than where we started, and certainly still working through how to, how we as Leadville will best utilize that group. But a lot of capacity building time there, too. So that was a lot of 24. And coming out, we had focus on new hires, and eventually got to, and much like all of us, waited until we found the right, the right humans. So our first hire was Sam Locke, who is a shared resource between the SBDC and the EDC, which is working out beautifully. That gives us a lot of overlap between what we're doing in the small business world and what the EDC is doing. And she's also taking a lead on a lot of marketing, narrative branding, those pieces. Newsletter started back up at the end of December, so starting to be able to communicate with that population a little more regularly. So kind of putting the pieces back together. And then in November, our team sat down and said, okay, fall step back, our retreat. What do we want to focus on in 25? We've had this year of kind of trying to put into motion what a collective impact looks like for us and all these different elements. And we can go to the next slide. And basically got to some specific goals for 2025, and largely trying to figure out how to balance this with being a part of the community builders comp planning and just being there as a participant, but also ready to jump when the timing is appropriate as we start to see, I think, potentially some economic development prioritization come out of that or different ways that might be important for us. But while trying to figure that out, what, what are we going to focus on and what do we need to do? So we're going to kind of get back to some basic pieces of business expansion and retention. So a couple of other key areas, and I kind of want to just break them down quickly and talk you through kind of what those goals are so you can understand. But then also, I think the overarching pieces, this is what our board is sort of saying, yeah, let's go in this direction. Let's get these pieces back on the table with our businesses. Let's understand what our business needs are. Potentially bring that back to the steering committee and be able to work with the steering committee on here's some things that we'd have elucidated. But also simultaneously, where is the, where's the comp planning taking us? And how can we step in? So if we go to goal one for 2025, business engagements. Again, collective collaborative efforts. We have really worked this past year with what we're calling Elevate Leadville Twin Lakes. So that group is Main Street, Chamber, Tourism, Business Center, EDC, and the SBDC. So all of us meet monthly and are looking at some of these pieces, such as the one-to-one business engagements. That'll be a collaborative effort where we will divide and conquer, but also share those pieces together and work at that together. One of the other elements that we took on in 24 is we purchased with the county Place for AI. So we'll be using that as sort of a model to compare and contrast what we can see there and how it's actually measuring up. But also, as we have these conversations, we want to really understand, are we still looking at workforce? Is that still one of our key issues? Are we still looking at the peaks and valleys between? We know that we got 20,000 footsteps between June and August. That's a lot of traffic, and then suddenly it dies off for a month or two. And that impacts both workforce issues for our, for our businesses as well as can we keep the doors open? So we want to get back to those conversations and do that collectively with this whole group and share that information. Come out with some themes, be able to come back to you all, but also come back to the steering committee and say, hey, same issues are still there, or here's the additional issues that we're seeing. And if we go to the next slide, along that lines, we want to kind of beef up our, some of our software as well. So GSI planning is a slightly different. We've got the Place for AI, GIS, or something similar, which would give our community, but also outside folks looking at this as a, as a community to invest or engage in, would allow them to sort of delve deeper into what is happening in our community in terms of, from jobs, what is the, what are the trends? What are the trends from work to employment to school to, you know, if I want to buy a house, what am I looking at in market value? So a little bit of beefing up our data support for that group. Along with Enterprise Zone, that's a whole other piece that we can get into. We have it in place, but definitely want to get where we, where the EDC is hoping, hopefully helping to manage that. So some focus in those areas. And then some other key pieces, I think, in that goal that kind of fit with the business support. We're looking at a business incubator program, business concierge. And the business concierge piece is something that we've been sort of starting to, the beginning pieces of working with the county on how can the EDC best support the county? So having that neutral kind of third-party economic development group that can come in and handle, for example, if we take some of our current situations, like Steve Smith or John Littenegger sort of situation where we need some advocacy that's neutral or some support outside of, that can't.
Like what situation? Steve Smith and, what do you mean?
And he might not be up to speed in terms of who those folks are and what their developments are. Sure. So John has the rail yard, and there's a bit of a pause on progress up there. So that has come, so we sat with John yesterday, Adam and I did. And part of that is, you know, sort of learning where all those pieces are at the moment, but also in talking through, what does a business concierge look like for Lake County? How can, how can the EDC start to become the entity that we need to help move some of those things along and not have them be stuck any longer? So been talking, working with Melissa and Ann, and just slowly starting to build what that can look like in terms of how the EDC takes on those components, in terms of, for lack of a better word, that initial engagement with some of the developers. But also, can we get to a place of a, a group that sits down and goes, hey, okay, from the EDC side, here's what we're seeing. Here's a group that's approaching us. Here is a developer who wants to do X, Y, and Z, and we have the right group at the table. We can sit and go, okay, do we have the sewer and sand for that? Do we have the public works for that? Does this fit with our model of what we just came out of for comp planning? Like all those parts and pieces. And the EDC did really take on that role of helping move them through the process and get them the support that they need. But also, hopefully, we would no longer be in a situation where Phase One is still wrapping up for four years in something like the rail yard. Does that help you?
Greasing the wheels on stall business is one of the blades on your Swiss Army knife.
Yes, and also I think, you know, when we look at things like the airport business park. Should you get to the point where that is a go and a move, the EDC can really start to support from the side of who are, who are the anchor partners that get in there to help stabilize that and actually help it grow, you know? Who, how do we help those folks can kind of suss it out in advance based on our priorities, our ethos, the county, all those different pieces, and go after those folks together, but then also play that kind of advocacy neutral role with them?
So like when we keep hearing from people in the community about like, oh, it's the wait time for me to get this project done or to have a foundation put in, let's say, for example, like if there was another foundation company here, you know, like, is there a, a vector that you guys have where like the community can input, like, hey, we need this, somebody needs to start this kind of business here now? Like even just a spreadsheet or something like, oh, you got like 20 requests for a, somebody who does windows this, this quarter or whatever. Is that like something that has ever come into play or?
Where I have it on here, and it's something we could look at and go, hey, is this appropriate to look at inside of 25? I have it in 26 and 27 to do a feasibility study and to really look at those pieces. This year, we have an economic, we'll get there, like an economic impact study that would be across our whole county to really understand what the drivers have been, that would then lend itself into that feasibility study as well. Business, industry, what, what really can fly here? So can I today go out and say, hey, this is the business we need? No, I think we have some groundwork to do on that, and it is in here as a, as a goal for us to look at. But again, I think part of that comes out of where do we land prioritization from the comp planning? And that might be me reading into that, Melissa. Does that feel accurate or no?
Well, I'm here, just so you know, I'm, obviously, I'm part of your staff as well as I'm on the EDC board. So, and I've been on the board for like three years, so it precedes my employment time here. And so we have been working on this, maybe not unrelated to what you're asking, you know, of that, that, what is that business concierge? So that we, you know, because we really need it. The city needs it, the county needs it, to be able to say, look, you need to go and talk to Tamara because, and we just went through that whole training of ex parte and all of the, you know, laws and regulations that sort of define our lane. So, you know, being able to say, okay, you know, work with them on this. And so I think getting that right is, is really important right now. And we have, you know, we have Adam Char, too, who's economic development tourism. So, you know, there, there's a few players that affect, you know, and so we're trying to really define the lanes well enough that we know when we're in our lane and out of our lane, and sometimes we might have to experiment a little bit with that to get there. But I think it would be wonderful to, to get to a point where we have like, oh, here's a need in our community. And how do we get that need met? You know, we were talking about it with the race series and the whole food, you know, like there's a need for some, you know, business. There's business opportunities there that, you know, somebody could meet, but anyway.
Did that address your question?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's on the radar, something.
It's 100% on the radar. And I think, I think what we're attempting to do is not also be operating in a silo. Like part of the idea of what we came out of in 23 is how do we not duplicate efforts? How do we not, how do we work more collectively? So.
How does the Venn diagram of you and the tourism and economic development work?
And Main Street and the Chamber and all those pieces. Yeah, and so we've spent a lot of time this year trying to work on those lanes and be sure that everybody's getting clear and supporting, all of us supporting each other so that we can get the Chamber up and moving too, right? Like that's a really important component that's been missing for a bit. So 100%, and also you'll start to see on all of our websites where those lanes are actually defined. It's on ours now, but you'll start to see some of that getting clarified, but that's been a lot of this year. Go ahead, yeah. We have been basically taking on the idea of doing an inclusive economic impact study. I know the Lifetime did one. We have some question marks. I will set a time with you once those numbers are all worked out to sit down and do that different from here. But the bigger picture here is to really look at doing something Lake County-wide. And first, sitting down stakeholder engagement to understand what do we want to get out of this? And then the EDC could lead on that. So just give us some clear 2025 data of where are we, how are things, what are the drivers, what has been the historic drivers? Where should we be looking in the future? And have something to work with that just is available to all of us. So that's a goal for 2025, and we'd like to see that completed by the end of the year. Goal three. This is one that's still, Melissa doesn't actually have all this, all these components yet, but started some discussions on, and this is really just up there for, for us to think about, initial phase of internship board. And this is really aimed at some conversations between CMC and the high school. We have some internship programs in place, but this has the potential to address workforce pipelines. So getting interns into our businesses who have big needs in the summer, but not such big needs the rest of the year, so we could actually not lose folks. It also has some potential to look at how we work with CMC around different curriculum up there. Do we have a, you know, the race series, for example, is worldwide branding. That's a little hard to come by, so it's, it's worth something, right? And can we have an events management certificate? So this is just a, so this is the initial phase, want to continue these discussions with the school district and CMC. We probably won't have anything tangible. Kate has said she needs this year to kind of get stabilized, but she's very engaged and been chatting about it a bit, too. So just up there is a, hey, on our mind is workforce. How can we influence that and CMC in the college? Chafee has done, or actually, Salida has done a, a great job with this down there and kind of having the EDC help support that internship program. So taking a closer look at it. Next, community partners, just sticking to being a part of this. That's really just one of our goals. It does take time and energy and, and just to have it up there and awareness for all of us is to just engage and be present. And also to better understand as we come out of that where the EDC can be the most beneficial to all of us. So open to learning from that process and how that might inform our partnership models as well. And continued evolution and development steering committee, you know, keeping this moving. It is an evolution process right now. And as we kind of move through a lot of changes from our BOCC to changes in positions, I think this in the next few months, we will start to see this group be able to say, here's what we'd like to focus on together and be able to come back with that. So that steering committee meets monthly. We've had conversations ranging from, that group was able to kind of talk through when they had, there was a period there in June where we thought we might have four things on the tax on the ballot. They were able to talk through that through this group, and actually that sort of informed further discussions that brought it down to two things on the ballot, which was actually a little more successful. So that's an example of where this has been beneficial. It's also been beneficial, this group has identified just to be able to come in at that kind of key decision-maker level and be able to use each other as resources and have those conversations. That, my hope is that we'll see a little more form out of that in, in terms of how we can engage our business community with that group and other places we can leverage that for, for voices. And I think capacity building was the last one after that.
I will say this, I think I've heard from the steering committee from the school district, the county, and the city, like, has been really helpful in collaboration and like having conversations in an open manner, especially in a third-party kind of situation. I heard that's been helpful.
Awesome. And they, and I will just say, like, the, the intent of the steering committee is also that those humans can then go back to their designated areas and really figure out what's going on or represent. But, you know, the idea is if, if the steering committee talks about something, they come back, have a conversation with the county, and then come back to that meeting, but here's where we are. And it has had some impact this past year and even in its capacity building stages, so. And just continuing, we're going to be looking at, we're thinking about a shared grant writer. The idea of that would be that it could support other things besides the EDC, such as things like classy wheelers, even, you know, the, the school district, you know, as we look at bigger projects that we need to execute. How are, you know, when we think about economic development, the stabilization of that is I need my enrollment to be increasing, not declining. I need certain quality of life measures to be in place so that we are allowing for growth to happen as well. So the, one of the folks on the, on that table would be a shared grant writer that we can utilize. As we know, most of our, from federal to state to whatever type of grant we're looking at, are very much looking towards how is the collective process versus a singular need? How are we tackling it much more collectively? In addition, we are talking about, you know, in terms of staffing, there's a piece on the table right now to work with the, to work with the city around, and all of us actually around the, the URA, and potentially look at some staffing there that could help us move that along in a positive way. But again, that's very preliminary, so I don't want to get into that right now. But I think some pot, potential there for us to move forward, and then Chinese and conferences. So those are kind of the focal points right now of the EDC for this year. And I don't know what I had after that, maybe nothing. Oh, three-year goals. So some things that are on our mind, but again, this gets back to how our collective world is all working between city, county, and the EDC. And really having all three of those, those legs on the stool functioning well. But we know incentive packages have been a conversation for a while, so how can we support on that piece? You know, I'd like to see the business concierge model this year. Hopefully by the end of the year, we're starting to get that functional. And then really see that flourishing coming into 26 and 27 and being, you know, the city, the county know that they can call the EDC to handle certain pieces, or, or likewise, we have a group in place where we can go, hey, we know there's this, this chunk of property. I've got somebody interested. Does it meet all of our needs? And kind of working through some of those pieces in numerous ways of the business concierge. And then on the capacity building side with the steering committee, we've talked about, do we need sewer and sand at the table? Do we need other folks at the table in that? That will be something for, as we have a turnover of positions, that'll be something for them to focus on this year and decide who else they want at the table, and continuing to develop that, engage that. We are here and ready to support around the airport business park when it is time. That has been a, a process as well, but I think we're getting closer to maybe some movement there. Um, yeah, so nothing major out of the ordinary here. The market feasibility study to supporting the steering engagement kind of gets back to your point, Commissioner, around what can the EDC do in terms of helping us really understand the direction of business and engagement there? And what are we missing? What would really flourish and thrive here? So that would be where I would see that fitting as well. And my last piece, now that we're at 3:31, questions, areas of interest for the BOCC? But you've asked them along the way, so what can we do to support you? But that's a quick look at where we've been and where we're going.
Sweet.
Ready for now?
No, I, it's fresh air maybe, it's something.
I understand that you might have some new filters in this room soon.
Yeah, Matt, yeah, like something in the carpet sets Matt off. He's like, I'm putting filters in here.
It's a whole thing.
A window would be great.
Yeah.
Oh, I know.
Maybe we'll renovate the building and put a window in.
Well, when it's appropriate and we have the economic impact study rectified, so if everybody has that information, it, the study was fine, but it was aimed at the state instead of at the local county. So I've been working hard for five months now with the lead researcher to get those numbers rectified. I think we're pretty close. And when you guys have a window of time, I'll set a, I'll get on the agenda to come in and share that with you. So you have that piece. And then I think when we do get to the bigger stakeholder, um, economic impact study, we'd love to make sure we involve you all in that process. And what, what would you find valuable to see in that study as well, along with any other studies we do?
Well, we'll be here and we'll be learning about all kinds of new needs and dire situations and ways that we can all figure out how to make good decisions together.
Yeah. Well, welcome to Friday night, Friday afternoon.
Thanks.
Thank you for doing.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks, you guys. And I will also be meeting you on other terms of, uh, this is about here. Uh, race series pieces too soon, I'm sure.
Yep, lots of stuff.
Yep. Thanks.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Tamra.
Thanks.
Right, thanks, Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa.
Weekend, actually.
Yeah, right, you ladies both as well, thank you.
See if they're quiet out there.
Oh, yeah, please leave that.
Yeah, just leave that open. Get stuffy in here. All right, uh, that concludes for the day. It's 3:33 PM, we are concluding our work session of the Lake County Board of Commissioners.